I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I hear a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Seven. You got me lost.
There we go. I will second Noah's plan.
Okay, motion made. Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. On the next one, council on uh consent agenda, aye. We're just going to do March third of twenty twenty work session. The rest of them will be on next, on the next meeting. We didn't have all the minutes quite caught up yet. It's been a hectic. So, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Can I even approve it or second it if I wasn't here? I just forgot to want if I remember reading correctly if I wasn't here.
That's true.
No, you were on the phone. I thought I was, but I was trying to look at my calendar. I thought I was really here, not like my own name. And I remember the word in the conversation.
You were at the last meeting on this one.
This was for March third though.
I don't know.
You're on the wrong agenda, so we. No, this is, this is this one.
Well, what is April?
We're not April, we're May. That's so weird, we just have more than January. I just remember when reading your box.
Let me go grab it.
Uh, we don't have to have it in thirty of you. Because I was reading through one and it had um. And it says April twenty eighth.
Is mine's April or year?
Yeah. Oh no, yours doesn't count. No, mine's different.
You forgot to get it out of your box.
No, I couldn't help.
I'm just trying to see if you're paying attention.
I just wanted to make sure because it says I was not present, but I remembered the conversations. I was not, that was not a phone call window, no.
Okay.
But I thought I was here, but if I, so if I have to approve, I have to correct it as being here. I can't really remember how it, I mean.
Which, it says I wasn't here, so if I wasn't here, I can't approve it, can I? Right? Well, then you'll have to hold, put all the minutes on hold until next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
If you can't approve it.
Yeah.
Why, I mean, I've been at all the other ones, I just thought I was here.
Somebody on the phone. I'm not quite sure.
I'm, I'm pretty darn sure it was here, so we would have to correct that. But you'd have to verify it from your audio, correct? You weren't there. Okay, then I can't have my audio. Then I can't, then I can't.
Okay, then we'll have to table that.
All right, we'll table the consent agenda. Next meeting. All right, let's go down to uh department reports. Scott?
Hello. Uh, do you have a copy of the report? So, would you have a person?
There's Scott.
I was gonna bring it. Is this where you're on the floor?
Yeah.
Here. All right, so if you look uh from last year of April to this year April, uh, last April, we had ten thousand four hundred and seventy-six calls per service. That's radio, telephone. Uh, this year, we jumped up to twenty-one thousand eight hundred and one. So we had a forty-eight point one percent increase in activity at the nine-one-one center. And, so I printed it out here, um, the cadent tally. For this year, we had, for the month of April, one thousand and fifty-four events for the different law enforcement agencies, ambulance services, fire departments, compared to nine hundred and thirty-three last year at this point. So I just wanted to point out that we had a forty-eight percent increase. We're working on the stats now to find out is our burglaries, our thefts, our mental health, uh, domestics, or whatever. The computer won't uh digest that. I have to individually go and click that out. So, next council, and if we have another banner increase for services. And I'll give you an idea of what uh, what's causing the increase. What's causing the in- increase, uh, oh, I know a few of it. It's like, uh, there's mental health and other places that were affected with the shutdown. It's hard for clients and people to contact their providers or their, and so they end up calling us so that we can get ahold of them so they can make. So, you know.
Scott, is there a way over there that you can find out, like on your, when they call nine-one-one and they hang up all the time? Tell you a way you can track that number?
Yes. I can speak from experience last week. My daughter accidentally did it and they showed up and my house was pretty crazy.
So, so we basically get uh what they call ANI, which is Automatic Number uh Identifier. So we have their cellphone number. Ninety percent of the calls are cellphone. Or maybe ninety-nine percent are cellphone. Which there is no public book, publishing book on cellphones. And also, we have portability, which means nationwide portability means you can take your LA phone number and come to Lakeview, or your Washington DC, or Utah number, or whatever, and come to Lakeview. So, generally, if you're, got your phone in Lakeview, it'd be a four-one-seven or a two-one-nine. But, since there's no published way that we can find out, I mean, there's in certain circumstances where we can contact the cellphone provider, but only in life-threatening type stuff, to get the information. So what we do is we call the number back. And can we talk to mom?
Well, you know, it's funny because I, that's what I told her when she said, Mom, I accidentally hit nine-one-one while doing her homework on her phone. Said, oh, they'll call you back, honey, and you're telling them it was an accident. No, they showed up at my house, but I have a prepaid phone for that child, so I was really curious how
Unless.
they got the address.
Well, more likely, as that number has somehow called our system.
Mm-hmm.
So, we keep, as long as we put the phone number in, we can query that phone number.
Oh, okay.
And it say, oh, belongs to so-and-so at this address.
Yeah, okay.
And generally, we like to send law enforcement down.
Uh-huh.
But if we really don't know who they are, we do a phone contact, and then hopefully they provide us the information that we send an officer down to verify that it's not a hostage or a domestic or something like that. So, or you're meeting your kids.
Well, that was the funny part. They didn't even ask to make sure you were alive.
Yeah.
I mean, hello.
Yeah, so.
I've been locked up with you.
I mean, that's sort of the, I mean, there's, the technology is, is growing and growing, and soon we'll be able to uh basically put the phone number in and we'll be able to track them and all that. Because right now, uh, when you call nine-one-one uh through your cellphone, that's why we like people to keep their copper line. Because the copper line in your house tells us the exact address of who to send. Where if you do a cellphone, it gives us the, maybe a three-block area, so. A fire's pretty easy, you just follow smoke, but.
Hang on, I'm gonna see what I can do with this.
So it's not down, it doesn't pinpoint.
So, I know in the past, we had an issue with, and I believe it was an old system, with the phone picking up calls constantly, or the calling system picking up calls that were just static on the internet. Is that back in April of last year? Would that have been eliminated, April of what, two thousand nineteen? Would that have been eliminated by then?
Pretty much so, because our new recorder's not online. And, um, yeah, I mean, and we get a lot of, of nine-one calls we pick up, and it doesn't display a phone number. But, if you're a cellular provider, and even on copper, if there's a short, it goes ch-ch-ch. It thinks it's nine-one. And with the cellphone company, when someone dials something and the cellphone company doesn't know where pipeline to send down to, they automatically flush it to nine-one.
So we didn't have that issue back a year ago, because we fixed that issue by then somewhat, for the majority compared to what it is now.
And you can compare them to the actual call, uh, if you look at the CAD sheet, it says how much for law enforcement and stuff like that.
So look at your email.
And that is increased quite a bit. But, those are just, uh, I mean, we don't create a new CAD for like follow-ups when it says, well, you know, I called the sheriff's office or the dispatch for the officer and he hasn't returned my call. We don't create a new CAD, we just go back to the old one and say, well, somebody called back the operator, or, and the deputy will get ahold of you. So, there's a lot of redundant calls that really we don't make CADs for. Any other question?
Okay, I just sent it to you, Sandy.
Okay.
Hopefully that works. Okay, I'll, if it doesn't work, call me back.
I know.
Cool. Might please miss.
Do you have any questions for Scott?
No, no, not the stolen ones. Because I know there's been a lot of hangups and stuff like that.
Yeah. And we, we have to, if we have a phone number and we can, a lot of times, uh,
In there.
The Go phones or whatever, you can't call it back.
Okay, go ahead and um try calling the sheriff back, so they just email.
The ones that, like the crisis interviews up free, you can call them or what, but nobody can call you back. So it's like. Or the ones you give your kids, you know, I don't have this phone anymore, so let the kid play with it.
She's got a real one.
And they call nine-one-one. We get a phone number, but we can't call it back, we can't locate it, we can't.
Like turned off cellphones, like.
Yeah, you can have iPhone on with the cellphone, and so even a disconnected phone in a house by state law says you can still, I mean, you won't get it out on, but you can still push nine-one. And so with even the old cellphones that are no longer being used, and they're now toys for the kids.
They got a whole drawer full of them, I'm gonna go and try.
Will and can call nine-one-one. And, and if you do that, I hope Tina's working, so she can.
Well, it's interesting looking at this, there's obviously P O N calls that have increased and stuff, but I know there's been fires already.
Well, that and because of the people exiting the city, they're going out into the desert. Okay, so they've increased their uh like sand dunes and places where people are, are sheltering in our county.
Go out east of Adele, their camp are all through the desert out there.
Really?
Yeah, outside of Bush.
Which unfortunately, the, it's a burden on our community. I've talked to several people that were moving cows last week, and these various people all over the.
There's dry camp and they never get pulled out.
Yeah.
That's why they closed this first camping, because they're having.
Which is really bizarre driving back into town.
Because we went down to Lake Shasta, and we, of course, we were on a houseboat. Uh, they closed the campgrounds down there. But they didn't put on the beach campground closed. So people would come up for day use, or.
Or spend the night.
Evo or something to stay the night.
Yeah.
But the bathrooms are locked. So where do you think they did their business?
Right next to the bathroom.
Yeah. So they created, I think.
It's created a sanitation issue every time.
A bigger issue than, by locking them up, they created a bigger.
Yeah.
But at the same thing, at the snow park, there was, I seen some pictures of those bathrooms, you know, on top of Hillary on one.
Yeah.
There was just toilet paper and stuff all over around bathrooms there.
And it's like, really, is that, no, anyway.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. And anytime you guys wanna come down and, and spend an evening or an afternoon with us to actually see what we do, I actually might do that. Oh, we encourage you to. Come down and just see what our call volume is. A lot of times, it's just nothing, but all of a sudden, it just zooms from, from twenty percent to a hundred percent. You know, like today, I was there, and a ranger called and says, I need an ambulance, a guy with a seizure, blah blah blah. And the radio system was so bad.
Did you try?
We had, it was like three minutes before we finally get some information. And so our stress level goes out of the room, we find out, oh no, the guy was just, just tripped and fell, he's okay.
Okay, there you are. John, Daniel, yeah.
Okay, got you. Bye. Are you still there, Sandy?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good.
Now you can go back and do your consent agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, we could. We could go back to that. Old agenda. Oh, wait a minute. You guys wanna do that? Just go back.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Exactly.
Another way. All right, Sandy?
Yeah?
Okay, on the consent agenda, we're just doing March third, twenty twenty work session. March tenth, um, work session and March tenth regular session, and March seventeenth, emergency meeting. And April twenty-eighth, regular session will be at the next meeting. Cause not all the minutes got done yet. So, I asked a motion for, to approve the consent agenda. And Scott made a motion, I just need a second, cause Nikki wasn't here at that meeting.
So have we voted yet, or are we voting?
No, we haven't voted. I just need you to make a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I touched the button.
Okay, motion made, second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good, got that one out. All right, let's move on down to uh the more department. Dennis is not here. Jeff, you have anything?
Um, a little bit on our water use the last month. We uh, last year, we were getting about fifty percent of our water from the springs this time of year. And we only got about a quarter this time, so the water table down quite a bit. We've got four million gallons. It's coming up a lot now, but last month, we only got four million gallons total for the month out of our springs. Should've been more like twice that, so. We put in for a little work, a little grant from Workmen's Call through Safe Corporation. And we put in for twenty-five hundred dollars to buy a washer and dryer for the shop down there. And uh, we got awarded seven hundred and fifty under twenty-five hundred, so we got about a third of it, so. Something. So we went ahead and purchased a washer and dryer and got it installed, so.
Good.
Did one of your guys get kicked out and live in the shop now?
Yeah.
What kind of?
That's good.
Really, not, not too much more. We're irrigating our fields, got fertilized, everything's up and running. We're taking care of the parks, so our park guy comes on.
Yeah, when's that gonna start?
Uh, he starts in June. Start of the month.
Oh, okay, since last year.
Yeah, he did a great job.
So are we, are we watering the parks and stuff like that?
We are, yeah.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. I saw you guys, cause it keeps those weeds at bay a little bit.
Yeah.
And just keep the native that brown stuff.
We we even feed it, it too, so, got some agenda left.
Yeah?
Yeah? Can you have people speak a little louder and pronounce something for us, because it's kind of mumbled.
Oh, yeah. You should go speak up a little bit.
Thank you for that, folks, though. I can read that book, it's called it, so.
Jeff, that one.
Oh, he just snuck right in there.
So, I don't really have anything else unless someone has a question.
I don't have anything. Uh, the only thing we do have is the gate that we put up, or you put up, I should say. That's to stop people from dumping their trash and everything down by the dam. Uh, they've been shooting the dam and stuff like that. And Jeff and them went up and cleaned that up and another spot that they used for a shooting range and left all their garbage up there. They're tearing up the roads up there and everything else when they're wet. So.
So do we have any idea based on the garbage left behind?
Been trying to catch them.
We did give some names over to Sheriff's Department.
Good.
Yeah. Haven't heard anything.
Well, I'm sure they'll figure it out.
Sheriff's Department has been notified, they have pictures and everything, and they are aware of it.
Okay.
So.
We did get a little bit of pushback, mostly on Facebook about the gates.
Yeah.
But.
So where are the gates, I guess?
You know where you go down on the lower side of the dam, right there.
People kinda hang out or take pictures or whatever there, I guess. Not garbage now, and they, kids are going down there partying. Cause it's a hideout, you can't see anything down there unless you drive down there. But it dead ends right there, it's hard to get out.
Yeah.
Their exit point, that's not as much, right?
They're kids.
Yeah, right.
It's not well worth it.
True.
All right, so move on down. Um, Errol's not here, I wanna find out a little more about the water grant, if I can come up with on that, anything else. Uh, Michelle, you have anything?
I do, I do. Um, I just submitted today for eighty-five thousand dollars for the AARP community uh, challenge grant. Um, and what I'm asking them for is to install some uh looping trail down at the McDonald Park so that our seniors can walk on, on, at the park and enjoy what the Oregon Parks and Rec is gonna give us. So I'm just trying to get a better infrastructure down there with the goal of next year and the year after installing potentially a sprinkler system, landscaping, um, easier exits and entrances, so that that's a real nice community park. So it's a start. Um, and then I received an email saying good job with the larger parks and grant um, oh, application. So the next step to that is going to, they have in the past had everybody go up to Salem and defend why they wanna help, why we want that money. I don't know if they're gonna do it this year, or if we'll zoom it, or. I don't know, they, it's TBD. Um, and then I have, uh, got one more step, and I've done the budget and budget message, and all of that is gonna be packaged up and sent off my desk. Um, and then uh tomorrow, I'm meeting with Scott Utley um, to, there's a eight hundred and thirty million dollars worth of grant money from Motorola. And we're going to start submitting grants for the fire department, or nine-one-one.
Drop, take that, system.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we'll be doing that, and then shortly after that, I'm gonna be kind of in parallel writing the Safe Routes to School Grant so that we can get some signs on Highway three ninety-five to have the kid be able to cross safer. And Mayor, you have some other things you wanted to?
Yeah, the, um, the speed zone signs, that are solar powered. I've already been talking with Jared Johnson from uh ODOT. And ODOT will put the ones in on the highway, but we have to put the other ones in.
That's no problem, I've been a daddy of them.
Not those flashing ones?
Yeah.
That when you're speeding, they kinda.
Right, yeah.
I don't have flash and lights on from certain hours of the day for school time. Like the ones that are on up now.
Yeah.
They'll be similar to this probably.
They're, um, they'll be on Third Street, one on I and two on H, going both directions.
Do we know if any of that includes crosswalk, um, designations?
The, the one.
Well, that, that's where those go, is that have a crosswalk.
Well, there's one.
On Third and Ave right there, it's a crosswalk designation basically. That's where they're gonna put the ones where the kids will hit a button, the lights flash.
Yes, there's.
And so people's gotta stop.
Okay, good.
Then when they cross, they can hit the button or it goes off automatically.
Yeah, cause there's no designation, no crosswalk at all there.
No crosswalk, no.
Children.
The state will have to put one across there.
If, if we get this, Jeff, if you, if you guys are gonna put them in, I'd be more than happy to spend some time with your children, you know. I've done a bunch of them, they're pretty simple to do.
Will solar, completely?
Yeah.
Is there solar with a battery backup, is what they have? So, uh, well, depending on the system. Some of these systems are purely solar. And in Lakeview, would be better off not going with a one-hundred percent solar system because
if the power available, we could pull it there.
Well, they'll, I don't know, the newer systems are all LED. So they run on solar with a battery backup. So, and they, they're pretty efficient, so they'll last. But the problem with solar from January till early May, you don't get enough UV rays. You get enough sunlight, but not enough UV rays to keep the system up and operating. So they go with a battery backup. And there are options, you can put a charger in there to charge that battery off in one ten if the power available. So there's a lot of options, there's a lot of different brands out there now.
And those, those actually.
Power available might be simpler to run off.
Exactly.
Those actually run about ten grand apiece on up. I was looking at them.
That's all.
Um, okay, we'll move on down to the whole business. Um, David Knowles amended the fire protection agreements between the Town of Lakeview and the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District. So we've got that done. Next on there, the swimming pool. We need to figure out what we're gonna do. Right now, the governor's ordered our all pools are to remain closed. And I don't look for that to open up till phase three.
So at least six weeks from now?
Probably six weeks at least.
Six to eight.
If not longer. Cause right now, she's got a lot of things shut down till end of September.
Like sporting events are also fairly look like to be canceled through, um, September as well.
Right.
That would probably include swim team.
So. And if we, if we do go ahead and close the pool, right now'd be a good time to put the new roof and go in and do a lot of the repair work that needs to be done. Maybe that much less we have to do and be ready to open for next year.
Well, you actually be able to get a, a pool painted, I think, and not have to worry about it peeling because it'd be, you wouldn't, if you had the temperature and you'd have everything drying out real good.
Why didn't you get the pool painted again? Didn't you just paint it?
This is our first season.
I mean, I know why, like why is this not holding up a little bit longer, I guess?
It was guaranteed for two years, it looked pretty good for two years. The third, it only had one coat on it, so. There also, this new coat should hold up better to have the.
It's an epoxy-based paint, you can also get that.
It should hold up. We ended up painting it about every five years before.
Yeah, it seems more reasonable, I was surprised that we needed that.
It's because they outlawed it. It was brand new concrete, it was brand new concrete, soaked up a lot of paint.
There's a lot of plumbing issues up there.
I understand there's a lot of need. I, for one, I mean, no secret, I'm not in favor of closing the pool at this point. Um, I think that even if we get thirty days out of it, that's, families are, are going to be looking for places to go with their kids. Um, I mean, I understand why. People, you know, wanna close it. Um, however, even the CDC has issued a statement saying that water in pools and chlorine has shown that there is no virus being transferred via, um, swimming pools. Um, so, uh, there's guidance from OHA in regards to pools, um, and making it manateal. We don't have a lot of the source of the surfaces, like cables and the the pliners and things like that. We don't have a food stand. So there's not a lot of cleaning services except for the bathrooms, um. I'm not even sure if that water fountain works, or any other surface that is used besides the deck that has chlorine on it a lot significantly.
Well, as of right now, the governor's got everything, got the shut down.
Yeah, I'm very, very well aware of the plan. Um, I have, you know, reached out and looked at other communities, and nobody else has canceled their pool for the summer. Burns, John Day, similar demographics, um, yet. So, you know, I, I would like to move forward, but it's open still and, you know. So, you know, I, I would like to move forward, but it's open still and, you know, we also have a kiddie park. I'm just not in support of closing it because I think when, when people get to the point where we have a hot summer, which is kinda looking like a dry hot summer, they're gonna need an outlet and honestly, for a lot of people, the mental health will be issue as well, not just a physical outlet, but they gotta get out of the house and if the coolest place for them to go, that's, that's it, you know, we don't have a whole lot else we may have there.
We normally open in June.
The other issue is lifeguard, you think whether we got two applications?
Yeah, I haven't even seen, I, I've been talking with a lot of the teenagers, a lot of them are vying for a job because so many have canceled out.
It's been posted in the newspaper.
So it's in the newspaper, okay, cause that, normally we've had it on our website.
Um, well, the website is still being worked on, so.
Okay, because they, they've all said they haven't seen anything and so I kept looking as well.
And I told kids, kids have called here and we've told them to come and get applications, we'll stick it through the mail slot. We'll email it to your parents, they have been told.
But I would love to see it like on Facebook and things like that, cause that's where all the kids are, I mean, and the school district, I'm sure we're gonna have a problem asking Lane to send it out because they have numerous jobs that they may not get to have this year that students have applied for, and so these kids are all looking for jobs, but they're kinda.
Some of the jobs have been shut back?
Well, and that's, that's the problem is, you know, there's numerous ones that they, they're, you know, still not sure if they're gonna get it to open, so there's a lot more kids needing jobs in the past, I think. And they can start working or training sooner than later because she can't train. Well, Jennifer brought up on that situation, but I'm gonna say they're more available than they are normally.
And plus.
If you get somebody to come train.
Yes, cause Jennifer won't do it right now. She will not do it.
Which can actually legalize them.
Yeah, and not only that, the kids that are, um, required to get their license, they weren't only given until May third or May fifth or whatever it was, to renew their thing online for their CPR cards, cause I talked to the Red Cross about that.
Mm-hmm.
And the other issue that we're gonna have is you have swim meets the end of July, first part of August, that gives them less than thirty days to practice for their swim meet. And all these. Well, they may not even have a swim meet. Well, exactly, but they're waiting to find out if we're going to open or close. And we have to have these kids so far apart in the pool, the way that Kate Brown has this set up. Yeah, I, I think that the swim team will address whatever issue they have to address for their compliance. Um, and, and I think that they are totally capable of figuring that out, following guidelines. And so I think as for the pool, I think it'd be worth getting the information out there, um, more, I mean, I'm, I'm a counselor and I've been trying to find the information myself, waiting on the social media, cause that's where all the kids find it. And, you know, having teenagers talking to me about how do I apply? So I think it's worth trying to see if we still get numbers in addition to calling back kids that, you know, been employed last year or the year before. What may be interested, the situation has changed dramatically from, from maybe possible expectations of their jobs, but I would hate to see more teenagers lose out on potential income for the summer too, and that's the other tough part, there's so far between jobs here for kids. Um, to me, that's one of those that's a lot easier for them to do. I just would like to wait and see a little bit longer rather than call it now. That's what I'm thinking.
Sandy, you have anything on that?
Well, you know, I'm really having a problem with this because I've only understood about maybe a third to a half of what people have said so far, and I don't know who is talking now at times. Um, so could somebody please clarify, tell people quickly what was said?
So.
Scott, you go.
I, she can't understand me. It's like a problem, cause I mumble.
Oh, okay. So Sandy, Nikki was discussing that there are kids that are looking for summer jobs that had summer jobs lined up that may not get to have them and would like a summer job and have been calling and asking her for applications. And she hasn't seen it flown on any other social media, it was posted in the newspaper. I didn't post it anywhere else due to the fact I was unsure of what was gonna happen with the COVID nineteen. Um, Nikki would like to see the pool stay o- open up this summer, even if it is for thirty days. Um, so that's pretty much the recap of the pool.
Well, um, my point is that, um, I think that once things do open up, that the virus is going to, uh, become very widespread again and we may have it here, um, uh, I think that that will probably result in more restrictions as we run, I just didn't add it. Uh, secondly, I think I worry about the number of people who unfortunately are unemployed and may not be able to report to the community this summer. And, um, and it's quite tough to train out of the high price and get them licensed for a short period of time. So, um, I, I think that opening the pool for twenty days is kind of risky for a budget. I'm done.
Portland has also, this ship has left, Portland has also closed all of their pools this summer for the entire summer now with the current guidance from the governor. Not that that affects us over here, but that is, that if Portland's doing it, you just see a lot of the jurisdictions following suit.
My big problem with that is Portland is also one of the few counties that is not requesting to reopen because of their higher numbers and they are a stark difference from Lakeview, Oregon or Lake County in regards to COVID and, um, just the infection rate obviously and the people per square mile land. I, I mean, I'll be real honest, if, if we close down and Altris is open, I guarantee I'll be down there a couple of times a week, given that my money. You know, and I hate to see other families take their money from Lake County that's gonna need it this summer and go elsewhere with it.
A lot of stuff down in Motto just got shut down too. So.
Well, opening the pool is not gonna be a financial help in any way.
Well, it's, it's gonna lose its time, it's gonna lose money that way.
Shorter the season, the more minutes it'll be.
I think she's on the cell phone.
Scott, you, you have any comments?
No.
Do you want to table this till another meeting and see what comes, transpires? Sandy?
I mean?
Yeah, you want to table this till, um, another meeting and see what transpires out a little further?
Or do you wanna do a vote?
Um, I, I think if, if what everyone wants to do, fine.
Is she riding a horse?
What's that, Sandy? You were cutting out.
You're breaking up really bad, Sandy.
I'm, I'm still, um, waiting for another meeting, two weeks from now. Plus it's pretty hard to get people hired and pool and everything, but if, uh, people are having too much of a discussion, uh, that's okay.
Somebody would have to make a motion.
Anybody staring at me?
You're the only one that's gonna make a motion, I know how I feel about it, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to vote whether we keep the pool closed or open.
One more motion?
I make a, I make a motion that we vote on closing the pool.
Okay, I'll send the motion.
Okay, motion's made in seconds. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you guys have a plan on closing the pool?
You wanna carry out the vote for the record? You want to carry out the vote for the record?
Uh, three.
I.
And, oh, yeah, and the opposed.
Aye. You can sit over there apparently. I think, I suppose.
You're sitting over there and not over here.
I'll put that off the record.
No, I think it's probably, because I don't look for clammy to open up. That's why.
They're closed all year, I already talked to, um, I already talked to her. And I, um, have her cell phone number, so.
Okay. All right, move on down to new business. Uh, we have a budget committee meeting, May twentieth.
That's it, we're gonna meet.
There you go.
Facebook, I think? Facebook?
Facebook Live. And we'll have people who come here, but we'll social distance and then Facebook Live. And.
Is that at four?
It's at five, I think it's at five.
What's that, Sandy?
She's got a terrible connection.
Yeah.
Is the motion passed?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Pool is closed.
I think it's because everybody's hearing that. Those are really bad leg, I mean, call it in, too, that's what makes it very annoying.
Our, our end up is down the home for about four hours to here.
Like listening to CNN, teenager.
With that stuff.
No, not at all.
Can you just hang on?
No, are you still there, Sandy? Yes.
I heard a click.
He'll fly out.
Oh, there you are.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on down also on new business. Um, resolution declaring surplus property, resolution nine eighty-two. And on that surplus property is a lot of, uh, it's about one dump truck. Um.
That's over there now, yeah.
No, it's not.
Nineteen sixty-six, yes it is.
Oh, I was looking at seventy-six.
No, there's a sixty-six down there at the bottom.
Okay, now that's, uh, the international.
Ladder truck.
Ladder car.
I think the old.
And that's the fire parts.
Rest of cop cars.
Cop cars.
Was a couple of.
Yeah, the rest, these are all the old cop cars that we have. So I need a motion to go ahead and get permission to surplus these out, put them up for auctions.
I make a motion that we pass resolution nine eighty-two as written.
I will second it.
Motion's made in second?
Aye.
Aye.
Sandy, you, you hear that?
Uh, yeah, uh, did you do the second already?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I hope you have.
You can vote yes.
Okay.
I owe the pay raise to Scott and Ray and I.
Just kidding. Can we get that one dollar bonus if we can hear?
All right, motion carried on that, we'll get rid of all that stuff. Uh, does anybody have anything else before we adjourn the meeting?
Uh, I got a question for Jeff. Have you talked to the auction company?
I have.
Okay, are you gonna need help getting that stuff all over the way?
Um, we have, uh, we have Stan, we have, uh, David from over there, we have Mike on it. We have all the two of the slow burners over on my bed. So we very well might, we're gonna try to go this Thursday or Friday.
I might be going to Clamath with my trailer possibly this week or first Friday next.
I can help.
Take one with me and drop it off on my way to Clamath.
I'm gonna do it.
Do I have, I have eighteen truck trailers.
Yeah. The, the charger is gonna have questionable fires on it, that's probably the one, the biggest lightest also.
Yeah, we're looking for that on the trailer and remember, Jeff? Or I might just wanna do a breadwagon, so I might take one over here.
Oh, that's right, I think I might be going to fly this weekend. Um, Jeff, have you still on?
Take a, take a cop car when you go.
Jeff, can you, are you still on?
I am.
Jeff, can you hear me?
I can.
Um, can you confirm or deny whether or not, if somebody is not here at a meeting, whether or not they can approve the consent agenda?
You mean if they're not producing virtually or if they are not, um?
In any form, if they weren't here virtually or in person?
If they're in person, they can't, um, they have relaxed a little bit of that type of, um, of those requirements, so as far as at least if somebody is just getting by line teleconference, I think it's fine.
If they're not.
If they're not present, I don't know that they can.
Okay, that's what I, that's kind of my understanding, so I just wanted to make sure.
So we did it right.
Okay, I, I was pretty sure that's right.
No, I don't.
If I want to.
I don't wanna call you, but.
Time to take it, you know, along line proper.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If nothing else, then we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at four forty-five.